All right, good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. 2:01 PM. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board. To my right, Vice Chair, Commissioner Wayne Fornia, Commissioner Carolina Mahia. To my left, Commissioners Rachel Grant, Commissioner Emily Klaus. We have County Manager Leonard Hernandez, and Assistant County Managers Josh Cummings and Jennifer Walker. Clerk of the Board Amy Davis. Thank you all for being here. We're going to begin today's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by our Commissioner for District 4.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, without any bounds.
Next up is land acknowledgement, Mr. Vice Chair.
We'd also like to start today with a land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge and thank the indigenous Salish peoples whose elders and ancestors have lived on and stewarded the lands and waterways of this county with great care, and who continue as sovereign nations today, specifically the Squawks and Island, Nisqually, and Chehalis people. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connect across all barriers of heritage and indifferent and difference. The purpose of this acknowledgement is to disrupt ongoing erasure of injustices done and to remember history as a stepping stone towards healing. We commit to working together to honor our past and build our future with truth.
Thank you. Next up is approval of the agenda. There is a proposal. So I would... Is there a motion regarding an amendment to the agenda?
I move to amend, I move to approve the agenda as amended, moving to amend the agenda to postpone Department Items 6-1 and 2 to the August 19th Board of County Commissioners meeting. I don't know. I make, I move to amend the agenda to postpone Department Items 6-1 and 6-2 to the August 19th Board of County Commissioners meeting.
Motion in a second to postpone Items 6-1 and 6-2. Discussion on that amendment. During that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
Discussion on the motion. Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Agenda is approved. Next up is presentations, and we have a number, we have a few different things this afternoon. First up is County Road Administration Board Project Manager of the Year, and I'm going to pass this to the County Manager.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. I'd like to introduce Steve Johnson, Grant Programs Manager at the County Road Administration Board, CRAB, who has an exciting surprise for a hard-working member of the Thurston County team.
Jane, you can introduce yourself as well.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm not Steve Johnson. He's right behind me. My name is Jane Wall, and I'm the Executive Director at the County Road Administration Board, and I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to be here on this special day. Just very quick, if you're not familiar with our agency, I recognize a few of you. Some of you are new faces, though. We are a state agency based here in Olympia, and we oversee compliance of the standards of good practice of our county road departments. We work very closely with our county engineers and public works directors. We offer technical and professional development, technical expertise and professional development for our county public work staff. We provide advocacy at, for our counties and advocate on behalf of our county road department. And we are just really grateful to be here today in front of you. We are governed by a nine-member board, including three county engineers and six county commissioners, including Commissioner Mahia, who is one of our esteemed board members. So again, thank you very much. I'm going to now let Steve get the recognition underway.
Good afternoon. I am Steve Johnson, the Grant Program Manager for CRAB. I've been at CRAB for about five years now, little over five years. Prior to my time at CRAB, I was an engineer here at Thurston County. So it's great to see some of you again. It's great to see some new faces as well. Since, since I've been at CRAB, there have been a few promotions. There have been a few changes. And I just have to say that from experience, this is a very good team to work with. But even on a good team, perhaps especially on a good team, a high-value project manager can really shine. So project managers must provide strong communication to the design team, whether that's in-house or consultant, to the other teams that work, that they work with along the way, to the department management, bosses up the chain, to the decision-makers yourselves, to the property owners, the neighbors, the residents along the project area, to tribes and other general public as well. And the project manager must also coordinate many, many variables and moving parts, including other county teams such as right-of-way, survey group, construction teams, and accounting. There are a variety of utility agencies that also need to be worked with, and in this case, I understand there were some pretty significant utility issues that Marcus worked through. And then permitting and funding. I have a special heart for the funding. So pulling all these threads together and staying on schedule is often an extraordinary challenge for the project manager. And this is how we know that a project manager is not just a standard project manager, but a high-value project manager. And the Green Cove Creek project was certainly a challenge, starting out as an emergency response and developing into a very significant, extraordinarily complex, and expensive project. Once again, this is why we, CRAB, are here today. Marcus's value as a project manager has been recognized by Thurston County. And I'm going to quote the nomination form. "Marcus's leadership and skills were instrumental in the success of Green Cove Clovert Replacement Project. From the onset, he managed the emergency repair efforts, coordinated with a wide range of stakeholders, and made critical decisions on the scope and design of the permanent replacement. His ability to navigate complex tasks was key to the project's success. Marcus's proactive approach, strategic thinking, and ability to coordinate across multiple fronts ensured the project remained on track to meet tight deadlines and the WDFW permitting requirements." CRAB, again, wholeheartedly agrees and concurs with this nomination. And so, we are very pleased, and I am personally very proud, to award CRAB's 2025 Project Manager of the Year to Marcus Storbick.
Not sure if I have to say anything. I've lost words. Especially touched that Steve Johnson was my mentor when I first joined, so very also personally touched by that. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, leadership. Obviously, public works leadership too for this recognition, and especially CRAB. Very honored and humbled. I have family members here taking their, the time out of their day, but especially, like Steve said, knowing that it's a team effort. Couldn't have done it without all the groups he had mentioned. So just very humble. Thank, thank you.
Thanks, Marcus. Riving cutting coming soon. Anyone have that date handy? August 27th? If you want to come see this with your own eyes, it's pretty neat. So, all right. Next up, intercity transit, East Martin Way Gateway Project Update Presentation. Back to County Manager.
Thanks so much, Chair. Today, the intercity transit team is here to provide a presentation on the East Martin Way project. They are joined by their consultant, SCJ Alliance. This presentation follows their study to assess alternatives for the intersection of Martin Way and Marvin Road. I'd like to invite intercity team. First, we have Director of Public Works?
Sure. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Karen Wiis, Public Works Director. Just to provide some context for this presentation, as Leonard mentioned, the County Manager mentioned, they're here today, intercity transit representatives with the SCJ Alliance Consultants, to provide a presentation. Just as background, in 2022, intercity transit approached Public Works proposing a roundabout at the intersection of Martin and Meridian to serve as a turnaround facility for their buses. Public Works authorized intercity transit to move forward with the feasibility and scoping study, and subsequently completed an intersection control evaluation report to determine the recommended intersection improvements. Public Works was involved in the development and finalization of the report and accepts the results of the report. Today, intercity transit will provide the report results in their presentation today and the proposed preferred alternative. It is informational for the board. As a next step, Public Works would bring an interlocal agreement with intercity transit to the board for consideration and direction. The ILA would authorize intercity transit to proceed with the design right-of-way and construction phases of this project and define the roles and responsibilities of the project. As a note, intercity transit would be responsible for the cost of the proposed constructions. Our next steps would be a public outreach plan in coordination with intercity transit to include targeted outreach to impacted neighborhoods in addition to general community outreach. So with that as background, I would like to introduce Peter Stackpole, intercity transit's Development Director, who is going to introduce his presentation team. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for having us today. Again, for the record, I'm Peter Stackpole, Development Director from intercity transit. Pleased to introduce Patrick Holm and Ryan Shea from SCJ Alliance, who will be presenting on the traffic analysis for the East Martin Way Roundabout Project. This project represents the first step towards establishing an integrated turnaround facility and station area at the intersection of Martin Way and Meridian Road. Today's presentation reflects work completed as part of the first phase of a three-phase federally funded project. And if successful, this would be followed by right-of-way acquisition phase and ultimately a construction phase. I did want to point out that it's important to note that intercity transit has not at this point applied for construction funding, and we will not do so until the first phase is complete, including the public outreach and engagement. So with that, I'll turn it over to Patrick and Ryan to share their findings from the traffic analysis.
Good afternoon. How's the volume on that? Can everyone hear me? No? Okay. I'll try and use my outside voice, I guess. I'm Patrick Holm with SCJ Alliance, and Peter gave an intro on, on why we're here and what we looked at with our report with the intersection control evaluation. And so I'm going to just kind of jump into introducing Ryan, who led the operations analysis at the intersection and some of the traffic analysis. And so with that, I'll pass it over to Ryan.
Yes. Thanks for having us here. Just, like Patrick said, I kind of led the technical analysis piece of this, so I'm here to kind of support the presentation and kind of provide any sort of insights into the work we did, kind of the rationale, some of the assumptions that were made. Oh, I'm sorry. We're in. So, we collected a bunch of data on the existing conditions of the intersection. As you can see in the presentation, Martin and Meridian. This kind of outlines the existing volume levels and like speeds of the roads. It's a fairly high-speed intersection, 40, 50 mile an hour roads. The hourly volumes on Martin Way especially are quite high. This is a funnel to I-5 at, down at the basin at Nisqually. And it's a traffic signal today. It operates, we'll get into this more later, it operates reasonably well. It's not really an operational decision for IT. It's like they said, a function of their ability to provide more meaningful service. That we're looking at different control improvements. But overall, you can see Martin Way is a high-volume road, Meridian and Deteroe, a less high-volume road. We collected these counts in the spring, which is a pretty representative time of year to kind of collect volume data. We looked at daily volumes and then those peak hour volumes. That DDHV acronym you see is that the highest hour of the day, which is typically in that PM, going home from work time of day. So those are those high hours that we especially focused on in the analysis work we did. The rationale, if it works in the highest hour, it's going to work the rest of the day as well. And then using that existing condition data... So using those, those existing volume data, we projected out what the long-term volume scenarios look like at this intersection. We worked closely with TRPC and the regional demand model for those forecasting trends, and we used the growth patterns contained in that model, along with local knowledge of immediately adjacent development activity to kind of forecast out what that 20-year horizon is going to look like. And that became the basis of assessing different control improvements to see which would perform the best, or how they would comparatively perform in that 20-year horizon. And you can see kind of generally how those volumes are expected to change. I mean, growth across the board, but certainly Martin Way is going to see more traffic. There's no shortage of demand to getting to I-5. And then, and growth is kind of heading this way, so collectively all the volumes are just generally rising. So all these scenarios that we modeled accommodate that, that expected growth in the area. And I think with that, Patrick, I'll kick it back to you.
So as a goal for the project, we were looking at the intersection, and how could we achieve the goals of intercity transit, which was to turn a bus around so they could resume the 62 service, which used to go up and down Martin Way, but had to be diverted because of cost implications for intercity transit. And so all the stops currently on westbound Martin aren't not being used because of the cost implications for intercity transit. So this roundabout, or sorry, this intersection turnaround would be instrumental into resuming that 62 service to operate how it used to. And it would also fit into intercity transit's goals of high-frequency transit along the corridor, because being able to turn around that bus is instrumental into making that function. And so we were looking at what were possible alternatives that you could, how you could turn a bus around. A primary one is a roundabout. Another unique strategy that we looked at was a bus turnaround, U-turn, signalized bus turnaround. So this is unique. It only exists maybe a handful of other places in the nation, but it's a, a specific left turn, like U-turn arrow for a bus, and the bus goes into a transit-only lane on the right side of the intersection, and then does a U-turn through the intersection and goes the other way. So that was, we looked at that bus turnaround signal, a roundabout. And then on the, at the initial step, we looked at what, what does the existing condition look like, and how could a bus... And then, on the, at the initial step, we looked at what does the existing condition look like and how could a bus turn around there? What that existing condition would look like is buses turning left onto Meridian, crossing over I-5 and doing a U-turn at the Orion Roundabout, which is in the business park on the north side of I-5 at that location. That generally doesn't function well for InterCity Transit currently. And that's part of the reason why they had to alter how the 62 services currently runs. And it also, in order to meet the demand of what they were looking for, it would require additional coaches. So an annual increase of budget for InterCity Transit of almost a million dollars a year. So that kind of, kind of put that aside because it didn't meet the goals of what InterCity Transit was looking for in the project. And so when Ryan was doing his analysis, what we're looking at operationally is level of service, which is delay at the intersection. And A, B, C, and D being acceptable levels of service and levels of service E and F being failing. And those all have to do with how long are you waiting at the intersection? And so, when we were looking at opening year, roundabout alternative was level of service A, which means you're waiting less than 10 seconds at the roundabout and then continuing on your way. In the opening year, the bus turnaround signal had a level of service D, which means you're waiting anywhere from like, I don't know, 55 seconds to, 45 seconds to about a minute. And that's still in an acceptable timeframe. And then, the current existing signal now operates at a level of service C, which is about 30 seconds of delay. And then also, we illustrated kind of with these bar graphs of like what maximum queues would look like at each intersection. And so the roundabout in the opening year would have a maximum queue of about 120 feet, which is four or five cars. And the turnaround signal would be about 335 feet of queue, which is about 12 to 14 cars. And then the existing signal currently has about 335 feet of queue. So, in the opening year, the turnaround signal and the existing signal operate similarly, but with maybe a little bit more delay on the bus turnaround because you have to get that left turn phase in or the U-turn phase in for the bus, which delays all other movements. And then the next step was looking at what is this, how would this operate in 20 years, in 2045? And the roundabout pretty much operates the same as it would opening year. Similar level of service, or the same level of service and a little bit longer queue. So it's adding a couple of cars of queue. The turnaround signal for the bus operates same level of service, but a much larger queue. So 590 feet queue, so the queue almost doubles with that bus turnaround signal. And then the existing signal would have, if there was no improvement proposed, would have a 565 feet of queue. So a little bit shorter queue, but they operate pretty functionally the same now and in the future if we did a single option. Then, one of the things the county requested us to do is how would the, how would these alternatives impact adjacent driveways? And so at the intersection, there's a few commercial businesses and apartment complex to the north. So we took a look at what does that look like around there? And also, communities to the east along Martin Way as it goes down to the valley. So we looked at the roundabout. The roundabout operates at a level of service A. And for a roundabout to operate a level of service A, it means that cars that are entering have gaps to enter. And so when you have gaps to enter, it means that you're getting gaps at the surrounding driveways as well. So, when you have a roundabout that's operating at a high level of service, it means that the driveways adjacent to those roundabouts are generally operating at a high level of service as well. One thing that I would add that ties into both signals and roundabouts is most of the intersection driveways adjacent to this intersection are already right in, right out. So, what we're doing at the intersection isn't largely impacting those immediate driveways because they're going in, they can't turn left out of those immediate driveways. And then, kind of back to the roundabout, going in and out, you have slower speeds. So, part of the safety benefits of a roundabout is the chicanes in and out force vehicles to go slower and you shorten crossing distances. And because of that slower speed, you're getting slower cars exiting, slower cars entering. So, the driveways that are adjacent to the intersection are having to deal with slower traffic versus higher speed traffic. And then also, in the roundabout option, because we are taking away the left turn lane that's going east, sorry, westbound and south, we're able to put in an acceleration lane for the Ridgeview Neighborhood, which is to the east, that currently has to cross three lanes. And I'll show it in the next slide what that means, which allows that movement to be a two-step movement versus a one-step where you're having to cross three lanes at one time. And then, taking a look at the traffic signal. The traffic signal in the opening and future condition is a level service D. So it's just a little bit more delay. And when you have green time, you have faster speeds. As Ryan mentioned earlier, there's a 40 mile per hour speed limit to the west and a 50 mile per hour speed limit to the east. So as cars are going down the hill or up the hill to the Nisqually, kind of Nisqually River Valley, those cars are going pretty fast. And so with a signal, when you have a green, cars are going through there pretty quickly. And that makes it tougher for people to turn out of the driveways or make left turns. And then in the future, I mentioned the queues at the intersection. As those queues get up past 500 feet, they start impacting all of the adjacent commercial businesses. So, with the longer queues, it's hard to turn in and out of the commercial businesses. And so, those are the impacts of the roundabout and the traffic signal to the adjacent driveways. And then, as I mentioned, this is a little bit harder to see, but with the roundabout option, we're able to put in an acceleration lane. So currently, if you're turning out of Ridgeview Drive and you're making a left, you have to cross three lanes into westbound traffic because the left turn lane is, has an isolated lane that has a taper section that blocks out that section. And so with the roundabout option, we're able to kind of take that area back and use it as an acceleration lane. So, folks turning left out of that driveway would be able to turn left into the acceleration lane and focus more only on eastbound traffic in their first step. And then they could merge into the acceleration lane and then focus on westbound traffic, creating a two-step movement. So that, we were able to accommodate with the roundabout option, but can't do that with the traffic signal option because they still need the left turn lane in the traffic signal option. And then one of the, a key element of the intersection control evaluation is safety. Part of that, we have to look at the last five years of collision data at the intersection. And at this intersection, there was one fatal and one serious collision involving bikes and pedestrians. So when we take a look at what does that mean for a roundabout or a traffic signal? On the left, I have two diagrams up there on screen. A roundabout has eight conflict points between vehicles and pedestrians. And a roundabout has, or sorry, and a traffic signal has 32 conflict points. So, a roundabout dramatically decreases the conflict points for an intersection and also reduces the level of severity of collisions because the conflict points on a roundabout are generally side swipe collisions of folks, how they're merging into the roundabout. And so those are oftentimes property damage collisions versus in a traffic signal, a lot of the collisions are, there's just more conflict points and they could be T-bones or hit pedestrians or things like that. And so the roundabout reduces those. And so, especially when we're looking at bike and pedestrian safety, a roundabout has touted data that you're shortening crossings because they have splitter islands. So pedestrians and bikes don't have to cross the road as far and they're only focused on traffic in one direction. So, just like I was mentioning in the acceleration lane, it's a two-step movement. So if you're a pedestrian crossing the street, you're only looking at vehicles who are coming one way. And then you get to the splitter island and then you refocus your attention to a different way versus if you have a longer crossing, you're, one, if you're in a walk phase, you should be fully protected on a traffic signal. But folks might be turning right, might not be paying attention, taking a look. So, anytime you could shorten crossing distances for bikes and peds, that enhances the safety of an intersection. And so, in the traffic signal option, we're not doing, the traffic signal option doesn't do anything differently with the intersection. So, as I mentioned, there was a bike and pedestrian collision there. In the last five years, the traffic signal option wouldn't do anything differently with the signal. The roundabouts would reduce crossing lengths and provide slower speeds of entering vehicles and would enhance the safety of the intersection. And so, the next step as part of the intersection control evaluation is taking a look at cost. And the roundabout option is more impactful to the existing roadway as we have to reconfigure and create splitter islands and the center island and regrade the intersection. But we're able to take advantage of some of the existing stormwater infrastructure. But it does cost more. So the roundabout costs 4.8 million and the traffic signal modification would cost 1.3 million. And as Peter mentioned earlier, the project would be funded by InterCity Transit and not Thurston County. And so based on our evaluation of the intersection and the alternatives and taking a look at InterCity Transit's goals along the corridor and at the intersection and safety and operations and how can the grant, how could they get more grant funding in the future? The preferred or our recommended alternative was the roundabout because it enhances the safety. It has good operations in the current situation and also in the future. And InterCity Transit would be able to win grants in the future largely based on the safety enhancements and the future growth compatibility with their future plans for high-frequency transit. And that is the recommendation from our report and what we submitted to InterCity Transit and the county. I don't know if y'all have any questions?
Questions for these guys? For the board? My hand, this juncture, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, County Manager, we're ready to go, move forward. Next up, we have proclamation for National Farmers Market Week. And this is a, oh, you're trying to shout to Ellen?
Yeah.
To tell us what this is about.
Thank you so much Chair. Good afternoon Board Chair. Yes, this week you are proclaiming Farmers Market Week and we have some of the farmers market representatives here. And first, I'd like to invite up Heidi Smith, who is the Board Secretary for Bounty of Families at the Yelm Farmers Market.
Hopefully I can lean. Well, thank you so much Commissioners for having us today. There are several of us, as you'll note. I'm actually going to kind of speed through the first bit of our PowerPoint because there is one aspect of our market that I would really like to highlight. We began in 2012. We have been in four locations. We started on the streets of Yelm, those tough streets of Yelm, then we eventually moved out to Nisqually Springs Farm. At the invitation of then Mayor JW Foster, we moved into the Yelm Community Center. And now we are back on the streets, so we're full circle, but our current location is working well for us. We don't have our.
It's got them.
We do.
We do, okay. I'm happy to report that this year, we have the most vendor sales that we've ever had. And I know that at least a couple of our vendors are here.
Yep.
I think it's just Heidi, yes, thank you. And, but the program that I really want to highlight that is, it's not unique to Yelm. It's a national program, but it's one that we're really proud of. And that is the Power of Produce Kids Club. So this is a national program. It's free for kids ages five to 12. And every time they attend the market, they get $2 in market tokens that they can spend on fruit, vegetables, or a plant that grows food. And they can also attend our activity booth, which is really focused on gardening, learning about gardening, learning about environmental sustainability, environmental education. And for the last five years, we have worked with Yelm High School students to manage that booth. Three of those students are here today. They have since graduated, I know. And they were our managers last year. And so I've asked them to just come up and share a bit with you about how they see both the community benefit of this program and also just what they got from it personally. So I would like to introduce Radcliffe Cushman, Isabel Forsland, and William Sargent.
Afternoon Commissioners. So, I'm Radcliffe Cushman, High School graduate. I worked at the POP program as a manager for last year. Definitely a great experience. You definitely saw the community building aspect with a lot of that families, you know, repeat visitors coming back just to kind of check out the farmers market. Because that POP program proved kind of like a draw to like bring them in and to really experience that like community aspect that farmers markets can provide. And especially with involving young kids, I think that especially builds that, those connections that those kids need to be very involved community members. I definitely feel that if kids are involved at the farmers market at an early age, they will learn those community members' names, they will interact with them at young ages. And when they grow up to be middle schoolers or high schoolers, they definitely will have more of an involvement in the community because I mean, they have experienced meeting those community members, talking to them, buying things from them. So I definitely think that this has a large community impact, especially with the younger generation, which I definitely think it's a benefit. And especially for people who are working in a farmers market, it can also provide the same benefits. In addition, just giving them job experience, especially for, you know, high school grads and stuff like that. Yeah?
Cool, thank you.
Hello Commissioners. I personally have been, since a kid, like being exposed to agricultural teachings or anything of that sort. It really got me inspired to continue doing it as a career. And so I feel like having this, having this program and me personally and all of my other fellow managers, being able to teach that to the younger generation and like exposing them to that sort of knowledge and experience is really beneficial for them. Like, like Radcliffe previously mentioned, people, you know, coming back every single week and being excited to what's, you know, what's next, what are we teaching them next? And even them applying what they're learning in school to what we're teaching them now and almost just sort of seeing, making those connections towards each other. It's really important. And I know I personally gained from it and just being able to see frequent people coming back. It's just, it's, it's great. And I'm glad I got to do it. Thank you.
Good afternoon Commissioners. I think one of the biggest community outreach aspects of the POP program was like letting it, showing the kids that being able to like grow your own food and make some kind of a difference at home environmentally is attainable because a lot of them were like five to 10 age range and hadn't really been exposed to much of it. And personally, it, it made me a lot better with kind of connecting on a like shorter time span because we had to get to know the kids while we were trying to teach them about how to garden or something like that. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you all so much. Next, we have our Olympia Farmers Market. We have Isabel, the Market Director, and Jesse, our Outreach Coordinator.
Afternoon Commissioners. My name is again Isabel. I am the Market Director of the Olympia Farmers Market. Really excited to be here today to accept this proclamation. The Olympia Farmers Market is actually celebrating their 50th year this year in the community. And as we all know, farmers markets are vital to local economy, food systems, and building community. And just reflecting on farmers markets in general, just wanted to throw a note of recognition to our farmers who work tirelessly and their dedication brings us food and survival. So while we're celebrating our farmers markets, also just remembering the folks who put in all the work for us. And I will. And I will now pass it on to Jessie.
Hi, thank you so much, everyone in this room, for having us here today. I will try not to bore you to tears or exploit your time or attention, but I do really appreciate it. I'm Jessie, I'm Outreach Coordinator for the Olympia Farmers Market, which means I have the coolest job in the world. My job is basically putting a spotlight on what the 120-some-odd community members we have out at our market are doing. And turns out, they do cool, productive, positive stuff all the time, so lucky me. I thank you not just on behalf of our team and the institution of the market, but on behalf of those individuals for seeing meaning and what they bring to the table. And I'd actually like to connect everyone in this room a little better to that meaning by going into just one facet of the solutions that we're offering the challenges our community faces at our market. So when I think of like a great, strong community, there's a lot of factors that go into that, but two very important ones are a strong local economy, right? And food security, healthy food systems. So when we talk about food security in this state, unfortunately, nine and a half percent of our neighbors, that's almost 10% of our neighbors, claim food insecurity, meaning that if you're in a room with a random 10 people, odds are, one of them didn't get the nutrition they need. And that doesn't sit right with me. I don't know about y'all, but I'm not my best self when I'm hungry, you see? Fortunately, in the last few years, 11% of our neighbors were uplifted out of food insecurity and in some cases, out above the poverty line in general, thanks to SNAP food benefits, a benefit program that gets food directly into the bellies who need them. And who are those bellies? Well, 82% of them are working families. Those are people with skin in the game, in the mix, doing their best. Almost 45% of those families have children. I can think of no more noble cause than feeding the children and investing in our youth. 39% almost of those households have elderly residents, the people from whom we learn everything. So it is quite a meaningful effort. Made more meaningful, we, we not only accept those state benefits at our market, meaning all of those people now have access to some of the best quality nutrition in Washington State, but they actually get more of it with our Market Match Program. So we match up to $25 of benefits a day, meaning that, you know, Philip only has $10 left in his account. No, he actually has 20. Mariah only has $25 left in her account. Now she has 50. And I can't tell you the amount of times I've been a fly on the wall, like click-clacking in my office, overhearing at the window, that really resonating with a person who needs those benefits, that single mother realizing, yeah, okay, Timmy, go grab the extra carton of strawberries. That is direct and meaningful impact. And you are all a part of it. Now, like I mentioned, that's just a facet of the solutions that we're trying to offer, the challenges we face because no matter how you slice it, y'all, unfortunately, the obstacles become ever more complex, don't they? But what I will never say and what I'll never believe is that the future is uncertain or scary because we're all in this room together. You're all powerful people. You're policymakers and decision-makers and movers and shakers of Olympia. And you're telling us that you support our farmers' markets, that you support our mission and values. And so, we know that when you go forth and you make those decisions and you tell people about our market, that you have our mission and values in your hearts and minds. And that edifies me, that motivates me, that makes me feel so supportive and want to support all of you in return. So basically, thank you for recognizing that we are all so much stronger together. Thank you for caring. And thank you for giving us this little moment of gratitude. And we have a lot coming in the next years. If you're ever curious to hear about it, come find us. Thank you.
Event on Saturday? Right? Event on Saturday?
Saturday. You're playing.
We're supposed to dress like it's 1975, is what I read.
The theme for everything right now is use your disco stuff from the fair.
I have a jumpsuit you can borrow.
I got some stuff.
Thank you so much. I would also like to acknowledge, we do have a few vendors, farmers, in the room that have been invited. If you're a farmer vendor, feel free to raise your hand. And then, the directors from the Tenino Farmers Market, the Saturday Market at West Olympia, and Tom Water all send their regards and appreciation for this proclamation. It is high season and so very challenging to get some of those folks in the room, but they really do appreciate the proclamation today. So Chair, I'll turn it back over to you to read the proclamation. I believe we have a small recess for photo opportunities for a few things and then we'll go from there. Hand it back to you.
All right. Mr. Vice-Chair? This is a proclamation by Thurston County for Farmers Market Week, whereas farmers and agricultural workers provide residents with access to healthy foods produced locally and regionally through farmers' markets, supporting the health and well-being of our communities, creating vibrant, inclusive spaces for education engagement. And whereas farmers' markets provide consumers with affordable options in their communities and foster relationships between consumers and farmers, enhancing transparency and trust in our food system. And whereas farmers' markets contribute significantly to local economies by creating more new and better market opportunities that allow farmers to sell their products directly to consumers, thereby retaining a greater share of the food dollar within the community. And whereas Thurston County has five farmers' markets across the county that create places for beloved community connection. And whereas farmers' markets also support artisans, prepared food businesses, banjo players, and other vendors, as well as increased sales for neighboring businesses. And whereas farmers' markets are managed by dedicated community leaders who are driven by the shared values of supporting local farmers, feeding their neighbors, and creating a healthy Thurston County. And whereas National Farmers Market Week recognizes the important role farmers' markets play in our food system and encourages citizens to support local by purchasing their products at farmers' markets. Now therefore, the Board of Thurston County Commissioners recognizes August 3rd through 9th as National Farmers Market Week and celebrates the essential contributions of local farmers' markets. All right, we will be in recess until 3:00 PM. We'll get some photos and there's a few refreshments outside and then we'll reconvene the meeting at 3:00 PM.
Okay, it's 3:02 PM. We're picking back up with item three on the afternoon's agenda. This is public comment related to agenda items. I do have a sign up in several names. I'll call those folks out and then I'll call if anyone missed a chance to sign up for this particular list. We will have public comment related to anything under the sun just in a few moments after we complete the rest of the agenda, which is actually pretty short this afternoon. So first up on this piece is Michael Werner with Larry Taylor on deck.
Thank you. My name is Mike Werner. I represent the Ridgeview Two Homeowners Association as one of their board of directors. And we are one of the impacted neighborhoods, I think was the term that was used, from the, from this proposed roundabout. The, I've heard from my neighbors about some of their concerns and I plan to work with the inner city transit and the traffic engineers to understand their position better, perhaps at our annual homeowners association meeting offline. But, but I did want to reiterate the three things that I just mentioned to them at the break that I hear repeatedly from my neighbors. The first is for inner city transit to answer, and that is the even need for this roundabout. Currently, there is an ability to go onto Meridian Road and the schematics are all gone and go to a roundabout on Meridian and turn around and come back, which is different from what they're doing now, as I understand from the inner city transit representative. But that is another option to not even build this roundabout because there's already an existing roundabout down the road on a side road that would allow them to do the same thing. Although I understand it would, at 200 times a day or however many buses go through there, it costs money to do that. I don't know what the costs are compared to 4.8 million or 8.4 million or whatever the roundabout cost. That was point one. Point two, turning out of access into our neighborhood from coming up the hill on Martinway and turning left across all the lanes. Currently, there's a stoplight at that intersection, which allows gaps, which the traffic engineer tells me will be available also with the roundabout. I'm just not convinced of that. They have a mathematical model that they use for that. Unfortunately, I was not a math major, so I can't comment on that. But my concern is will we be able to even get into our neighborhood going across the road when there's a roundabout that allows everybody constantly to flow down Martin and there's no traffic light to give us a break to get in. And similar to that, my concern is with getting onto Martinway. And this, these last two points impact not just my neighborhood, although I guess I'm the only one here today, but Ridgeview One is another homeowners association that is impacted by this, as is the Squally Bluffs, our neighbor who use Ridgeview to get onto Martinway, as is Stellacom Ridge, which is not all built out yet, which uses Ridgeview to get onto Martinway, and as is the proposed development called Estates at Ridgeview, which is in a currently quarry, which will be using Ridgeview also. All those folks use our main artery to access I-5 or to come home at the end of the day. And I'm not clear that the gaps that the traffic engineers say will happen with a roundabout will actually occur, and I'm concerned that people won't be able to get to their homes either turning right, turning left across Martinway to get into their homes, or turning right to access I-5 to get to work during the day. But I'll be working with them to understand that better. And hopefully, I can get all, all the homeowners to come to the meetings too, so they can understand as well. That's what I had to say. Thank you.
Appreciate it. I skipped right over the guidelines, so before I get to Mr. Taylor, let me just go over those. Public comment guidelines. Introduce yourself in the area of county in which you reside. When you're called, state the item you're speaking to. Address the board, not audience or staff. Silence your cell phones. We do not respond directly to public comment, but may on an as-needed basis, county manager may follow up with specific items. Speakers have three minutes to address the board. May not donate any of that speaking time to other speakers. Please be respectful. Board reserves the right for good cause to restrict a person's opportunity to address the meeting. No comments that are offensive, lewd, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, discriminatory. No outbursts of any kind, comments that are commercial in nature, such as promotion of a for-profit business. No remarks about pending land use permits or similar matters that could eventually come before the board on appeal. And all written material provided to the county will be considered public record, subject to public release upon request pursuant to Public Records Act, Chapter 4256 RCW. Thank you for your cooperation on that. Election day is tomorrow, so no electioneering. That's part of the rules as well. And next up, Mr. Taylor with Steve Kern on deck. You know, the microphone is, okay, so there's two things. The microphone is to pick up sound for the people that are listening on Zoom, but there are microphones in the room, which we could potentially try to adjust to make it. There are microphones and speakers in the room embedded in the ceiling that have to be adjusted to address your concern. It's not this microphone. That microphone picks up for the online. So give us a moment and we'll try to address that.
We also have seats available up front, right here, if anyone would like to move up closer.
Kuescher, Claus?
We have addressed the issue of accessibility in the past during some boardwork sessions, and we were told that there are, there is an option for assisted hearing device of some sort. Is that something that's available to folks that are present?
Yeah, I think so. If that's needed, if someone is like have a, but I don't, I think it's a more general issue of just the speakers aren't quite dialed up. I hear that. Is that louder? Okay.
That's the speaker right here. Okay, but anyway.
When you, when you talk into the microphone, it was louder. The green, the green tile on the ceiling is the microphone. So if you raise up and talk towards the green, it will carry into the room.
Okay. Hello, I'm Larry Taylor from the Ridgeview Two area also, which is right near this roundabout, the proposed roundabout. We were here over a year ago. We were against it. We're here again. We're still against it. I don't think outreach is going to change that, but let me tell you why. So I've got a little letter here for you. I'm going to read quickly. The contractor recommends the roundabout as the first choice, just so IT can turn their buses around and meet an arbitrary 15-minute interval on a Martin east-west route. We, the community of Ridgeview Two, think this is a very bad idea for several reasons. We have included actual data and statistics to back this up. First of all, take a look at, and I did come down this morning, and make sure the clerk had all this data to give you. So here's the 30 worst accidents in all of Washington. The top six, four out of six are roundabouts. And when they say roundabouts are generally safer, I don't think so. There's not another roundabout, the rest of the 30. It's all in the top six, and four out of six are roundabouts. The top two are roundabouts. But just as an example, the very top one, which is 272 accidents, but that is actually four roundabouts in a short area. So just to let you know, that's sort of different than all these others. So Marvin Road and Willamette and Britton Parkway, that's right in our backyard. It has the second highest, and it's the single roundabout highest of all, because the other one was four. So the point is, we think this is a bad idea. As a matter of fact, we think you should come forward and say, we don't like this idea, and we think you ought to move that Marvin roundabout and change it back to stoplights. That's how bad it is. So why do I say that? Well, here's a printout. Records request from Lacy, Marvin Roundabout. This is exactly, this is actually their data. For six years, they had less than one accident per year. That's considered very safe. Once that roundabout on Marvin, and this is just an example, what could happen on Martin, it went all the way up to 55 in one year. On over 20-year period, they had 30 accidents per year. And that's where they crashed together. The cops come out and write a report. Now with the cop shortage, the police shortage, they don't even do that anymore. You call them, maybe four hours later. This is what one of our neighbors was telling us. You know, they don't show up right away. They may not show up for hours because there is a police officer shortage. So normally, what happens nowadays is the accident people exchange information, like insurance and address and name, then they move on because they have no choice. They don't, they can't wait all day for the police to come out. Unless, of course, it's a personal injury accident, then they're required to show up for that. The way I understand it, I'm not a police officer. So Melanie says, and she works at that Providence Clinic, right near that roundabout on Marvin. She says they hear crashes all the time, look up out their window, see it, and then sometimes multiple crashes per day. Two of their doctors were in really bad accidents there. One's truck was totaled. So this nice statement of roundabouts are safer, I've got the data that actually proves that wrong. And one other item, I brought some extra stuff. This is from last year. The British are actually removing roundabouts. They've got, had them for since 1909, 116 years. One of the main reasons they are removing roundabouts is the accidents are so high, especially cyclists. Cyclists and pedestrians are dying in their roundabouts, so they're taking them out. So we need to think about this. We need your leadership to perhaps say, no. Bring us data that tells us it's safe and we'll go along with it. Otherwise, no.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Steve Kern is up. Laura Kern is on deck.
Hi, I'm Steve Kern. I live at 9645 Regency Loop in Thurston County. So I'm here to reiterate what Larry was saying. I'll point out that between the housing areas that he, we just talked about, that he, that Mike mentioned, there are over 400 houses. You know, these houses contribute probably, well, at least two and a half million dollars in property taxes to the county. This just isn't a bunch of little, you know, people that are living in tents. These people also buy a lot and contribute to the tax base, which goes ahead and helps fund inner city transit. I, I appreciate the fact that inner city transit says this is something they really want, but they're not using the money which would normally come to them if they were run like a business. Every other city I've lived in or traveled to, whether it's Boston or New York, or Paris, or London, or Chicago, you have to pay to use the service. They don't pay here. And in fact, they're not sizing the buses to the number of occupants. You know, typical occupancy for an inner city transit bus is four or five people. I think that we're exaggerating the need by saying we have to, you know, quicker turnaround time for buses. One thing I will say is that because there are 400 odd houses currently, the last traffic study we had on Ridgeview Drive was approximately 500 vehicles per day. Now, that's a lot of vehicles either going onto Martinway, or going left, or going right. I totally disagree with the fact that it'll be easier for people to go left onto Martinway because roundabouts usually have a continuous stream of traffic. And we're not going to get that once, once we take away the lighted intersection. It's those lighted intervals that allow people to make their dash onto our street, or take the dash from our street and get onto Martinway. So I guess I disagree with, and I totally embrace what Larry said regarding safety. There are 18 lanes that are going, that right now converge on that intersection. When you put a roundabout into an intersection with 18 lanes converging, it's not going to be the same as a lot of the other intersections in town. There's going to be way more traffic, and I think this, it just, you just have to imagine that that many lanes and that many people jostling for position will be a lot different from some of the smaller roundabouts that are scattered throughout this county. So that's my, that's my statement. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Laura Kern is up. Nancy Evans on deck. Oh, didn't want to testify, but.
Hey, my name is Laura Kern, and thank you very much for allowing us to speak today. And I also live in Ridgeview. When I thought about speaking today, I did not look up statistics on roundabouts or look up traffic accident numbers. I just thought about it from a common sense point of view. I came up with a similar scenario, the billions of dollars that are being spent to elevate bridges over I-5 because the railroad wanted to enact their long-held rights to a corridor of land and put in a high-speed line. Tax dollars are having to be spent so that an entity could shave 10 minutes off of their Tacoma to Portland run for trains that run infrequently. And this is similar. The taxpayers fund the buses that carry non-paying patrons to their destinations. Now, they want to enhance the non-paying patrons' ride by putting in a roundabout in an extremely busy intersection to save turnaround time. This comes at a safety expense for the taxpayers who fund the buses and a financial expense for the taxpayers who fund the buses. The danger and congestion that a huge roundabout will bring to those living in the homes in the area and frequenting the businesses close to the roundabout will be monumental. Anyone trying to enter or leave Ridgeview Drive, which is a collector's street, to or from Martinway will encounter a difficult scenario with the constant traffic flow that a roundabout causes. It appears that inner city transit might have too many tax dollars to waste. Perhaps those tax dollars would be better spent to make the road smoother and better to drive on for everyone, buses and cars alike. It might have been prudent for the transit authority to have researched the feasibility of acceptance of the roundabout before spending over $800,000 on an engineering plan. Thank you.
Nancy Evans said not. That's okay. Anyone else with an item on the agenda that didn't get a chance to sign up? Okay, thank you for those folks who came. We'll go to county manager's update.
I didn't report.
Okay, sir. Oh, is it, yeah, please, if you, if it's related to an agenda item, you are.
Hi, I'm Kathy Smith, commissioners. I live in Ridgeview One subdivision. I read the same report that talked about the traffic accidents in the 30 major intersections. And the report does say the four roundabouts included have, are in the top six in terms of number of accidents. But that report also includes data about minor injuries, major injuries, and fatalities. There were no major injuries and no fatalities in the roundabouts. As far as minor injuries go, the accident, the rate per accident was for the four roundabouts, from 4 to 13%. In the other 26 intersections. 4% to 13%. In the other 26 intersections, the injury rate was 14% to 44%, significantly higher. There were also serious injuries and fatalities reported in the other intersections. My conclusion is that roundabouts are safe. There's, yeah, there's fender benders, there's not fatalities, there's not serious injuries, and much fewer minor injuries. And I think that should be considered when you're making your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair, vice chair.
Does the county manager have any advice for the HOA members, the community members, on how they can stay apprised of this discussion and stay engaged and know when other decision points occur?
Yes, thank you, vice chair. For those that filled out the signup sheet for the public speaker comments, would want to make sure that they wrote their name and either their phone number or their email very clearly, so the clerk of the board has that information. When this topic comes up, our commitment is, and even working with Public Works, to make sure that Public Works has that information when they're sending notices out, or if this item comes back to the commissioners for a decision point or a presentation, that we can send notifications out. Clerk, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I think I'm out.
I would encourage the HOA members to work with their HOA and come up with official positions, maybe, from your HOA as a, as a whole. And, you know, I know you're individual members of the HOA, but if you get together with your HOA and maybe take votes on positions and come up with something like that, that's also helpful for us in our decision-making.
All the addresses are very legible, so if somebody didn't get a chance, just check with the clerk of the board, but otherwise, I'll, you should hold on to that.
Thank you, chair.
Yeah. If you could come on down and get your information on there, include you in that communication as well. Okay, so there's no county manager's update. We do have a consent agenda, items one through 20. Any requests to remove an item from consent? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and second to approve consent items one through 20, none to be debated. A motion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Let me close. Motion carries. Those items are approved. Department items, there are none. After the amended motion, the two that are listed have been moved to August 19th. And so now commissioners, community reports. Commissioner Mahia.
Thank you, chair. I'll make mine quick, and this is my report. Since last week, met this week for the TRPC, Thurston Regional Planning Council Executive Director Recruitment Subcommittee, and so that will be posted here in the coming weeks. We were deciding on where to post this and make it a national recruitment, and I talked a little bit with the recruiter on the plan for that. Attended the pancake breakfast. I want to give a big thank you to your aide-chair, Linda Zeman, as well as all the other staff who volunteered and helped and gave so much of their time. It was a very successful pancake breakfast, and we had buckwheat pancakes again. And then just also a huge shout-out and thank you to all the fair board members and Thomasina Cooper and all of the volunteers who really made a fair, such a great event. Attended the county road administration board, and we toured both Thursday and Friday, toured sites in Cowlets and Clark County. So a busy day there. Attended the National Association of Hispanic County Officials and attended the Thurston-Mason BHASO.
Thank you. Commissioner Mahia, vice chair, for you.
Over the weekend, joined some members in the Squawly Tribe in kind of recognizing the open of the King Salmon Fishery. That was really cool on the Squawly River. Went and visited the Capital Metro Girls' Fire Camp. It's a, it's a camp, a two-day camp for, regionally, girls 14 to 19, where they learn about the fire service and leadership and kind of, it's kind of an empowerment camp that's taught and led by fire service members from throughout Thurston County, and they volunteer their time over those two days to teach, teach the girls about the fire service and emergency services. That was really cool. Attended the local elected official social that we hosted here. Had a meeting for the Billy Fring Jr. Statue Committee, where we talked about the various celebrations that'll be being planned for the dedication of the Billy Fring Jr. Statue at the U.S. Capitol and at the Washington State Capitol. Went and striped some roads on a road striping crew. That was pretty sweet. So you see any roads out there with wavy lines, those were not mine. Those were Commissioner Grant's and, what else? Went to the fair welcoming ceremony and then judged some dance contests. That was entertaining. Congratulations to Commissioner Mahia and Grant for tying for best or funkiest dancer. Went to the pancake breakfast with the rest of the commissioners and served pancakes. And then, just as a side note, there's a dedication on the August 19th at 3:00 p.m. for the Buqueta Post Office being renamed the Rob Gordon Post Office, after late Mayor Rob Gordon.
Thank you, Grant.
Yeah, let's see. So I attended, for boards and commissions, the Lewis-Mason-Thurston Area Aging Agency on Aging Council Government Meeting, also with Commissioner Mahia, the Thurston-Mason VHO or Behavioral Health Administrative Meeting. Attended the WSECU Hawks Prairie Branch ribbon cutting. So there's a new WSECU out on Hawks Prairie, which is really nice for everyone, along with all of these guys at the local official social. Had a great time at the fair. I won't, I think they, I attended the ribbon cutting and the welcoming ceremonies and the pancake breakfast and had a great time. Attended Yelm's Jazz in the Park. Really excited about Yelm, and, I mean, there must have been 100 and some people out there. It was a really exciting community event. Also attended Olympia Shoreline Tour from the Sea Level Rise Response Collaborative. There'll be another one of those on August 19th, and I want to just mention to folks that this was one of the, this was an incredible walking tour of downtown Olympia, really getting a good understanding of how we're implementing measures so that we are ready for any sea level rise. It was fascinating and really well-staffed. Also did the Public Works stripper ride-along, and I would have, I'm just going to publicly say it, that Commissioner Emily Klaus is the official, gets the award from me of the best stripper in the crew, although we all tried our best. Also went to some Yelm meetings with fire commissioner, local residents, and then spent some time with Mayor DePinto and city manager yesterday out in Yelm. That was my week.
All right, so for me, I just want to say thanks, Commissioner Grant, for the acknowledgement. You can all refer to me now as Commissioner Yellow Gunner because I have the straightest yellow lines of all of us. As far as what I was up to over the last week, my executive aide attended the Thurston County Opioid Response Task Force meeting this week. I also attended the commissioners' pancake breakfast. I attended a reconfiguration tour of the Waste and Recovery Center out in Hawks Prairie, Board of Health Education and Outreach Subcommittee meeting, the Public Works stripper ride-along, and a rapid response training with Washington Immigration Solidarity Network, and the local elected officials' social.
All right. With that striping, like, I don't know what you guys thought, but like, I was surprised, like, how easy it was for, like, five, for a few minutes, and then how difficult it got, like, the concentration level that's required, and I can't imagine how these guys are able to...
I did it the least amount of time. I was like, "I can't do that."
I was getting stressed out. I did good, and then I cut it off.
I did it three years ago, and so I'm like, "Maybe I need to sharpen out my..." We did Rich Road, so, I mean, it's Rich Road, so it was like, I was like, "Oh, gosh, I don't want to mess it up."
Inspector.
Inspector, there we go.
All right. Thank you. Well, just a few things, yeah, for the week. Attended a meeting with the other mayors and county manager, city manager regarding the housing money from Commerce. We're still waiting for response on that. Salmon Recovery Council meeting on Thursday. Had a meeting with the new director of Experience Olympia and Beyond. Since I missed his, like, public meet and greet, I had a one-on-one meet and greet with him on Friday. Got to the fair twice, once for pancake breakfast, once just to take my family to see what's going on, and everything was done really well, and I missed the opening ceremony, though, so heard that was cool. Public Defense Day was this afternoon during the lunch break. They were spotlight on 25 years of parent representation program. Judge John Neal from Thurston County was a featured speaker. Local official social with the rest of the team, and that was it. So now we're up to public comment on items related to anything under the sun. I have three folks signed up. First is Brian Muirhead, and David Hamilton's on deck. Yes. Oh, let's finish up this public comment, and we'll jump right into our public hearing.
Good afternoon. My name's Brian Muirhead. I'm a resident of Thurston County and near Patterson Lake. I'm speaking to you, as I have most of you, on the subject of, this affects thousands of our citizens associated with their quality of life being impacted by the train horns that are sounded at Atchison Road crossing 150 times a day. We're focusing, you have been focused on the liability question. We've been trying to work that, and I'll talk more about that in detail. And we understand that's an issue for you and for the county manager. In January, Commissioner Klaus sponsored a workshop, including staff, where the primary purpose was to clarify the position of the Washington County risk pool on not covering quiet zones. The county risk manager stated the justification was paragraph U of their memorandum of liability coverage, which is titled Railroad Lines. In a request from the county manager on the specifics of that interpretation, there was a letter sent to the risk manager that we also received on April 3rd of this year, from Chuck Boyd, the director of the WCRP. We consulted our experts, including members of the FRA, and they verified that the interpretation provided was not in any way applicable to the type of quiet zone we're talking about creating at Atchison Road, which is a curb, a concrete, non-traversable curb down the center line. Commissioner Mahia then, in response to that letter, set up a meeting with us and Director Boyd, so we had a chance to talk to him specifically. He seemed to understand that the justification he had provided, based on a web search, was really not applicable. On the other hand, he still felt there was an issue associated with a curb that somehow was viewed as a structure that somehow had something to do with railroad lines. Now, we don't believe that is the case. Further discussion, though, with Director Boyd was very useful in the sense we understood, and he understood more, the low likelihood of an incident at this crossing, and that any resulting suit that might occur gave us some insight as to how the WCRP works with the county. They care about helping the county deal with liability. That's their charter, and I think they take that very seriously. So what we learned first was that the WCRP, when an issue is, the county has an issue, a liability issue, they go to the WCRP. They talk to them, and the WCRP will decide whether they can cover that risk or not. If they can't, the county has the opportunity to appeal that decision and come back and work with the WCRP. So we believe that there could be a very sound basis for an appeal if ever an incident occurs, which most people think is very low, that the diagnostic review that we've been asking the county to approve being done would clarify there is no relationship between what we're doing at this quiet zone and the railroad lines themselves. So we're asking the commissioners to schedule a meeting, and I understand maybe, maybe one of your working meetings would be a good opportunity to conduct a discussion of the diagnostic review. We can provide the material that you may need, and we can provide experts, if necessary, to help support your understanding of it. We believe that the diagnostic review process is very straightforward. We see results of that process. It's not a hard process to go through. I know Matt Unzleman has been through that. So we believe there's a straightforward process to evaluate, conduct the diagnostic review.
Need you to wrap up.
Yes, okay, one, one last, a couple sentences here. We recognize that one way for the commissioners to understand what the community cares about is to hear from us. So we are working to bring a group of, of local citizens who are affected by the noises of the railroad crossing to come to your meetings and speak in this forum, just to give you their personal perspective on their quality of life issues. Thank you very much.
David Hamilton, John Pettit on deck.
We were going to go into our public hearing, right?
I'm going to finish this public comment.
You want to finish that?
We're close to the end, and there's not a ton of people left for, I mean, for the Long Lake issue, so.
Hi.
Yep.
I'm David Hamilton. I live at McIntosh Court, at the south end of Patterson Lake, and we're about a mile from the railroad crossing in question. And I just want to talk for a minute or two about the problem that I have and how it's affected my life. A lot of people have insomnia. It's not an uncommon thing. One in 10 people have chronic insomnia, which makes it pretty hard to get to sleep. Your mind keeps going, thinking about the day, the next day. You can't get to sleep. "Oh, my God, I can't get to sleep. There's something else to worry about," right? And then, lying there in the quiet, I hear the train sound at Marvin Road. It's just faint, very faint, but I hear it, and now I know there's a train coming down my way. It's going to be blowing its horn in another unit or so. So it's giving me one more thing to worry about, think about. And the horn at Atchison, or at the intersection, or the train intersection we're talking about here today, that's loud enough to wake me up. And then there's, after that happens, then there's going to be another horn at the station, you know, at the Centennial Station or at Marvin Road. So it just gives me one more thing to worry about, which affects my performance, my ability to concentrate the next day. I mean, suppose I was striping roads, right? And I had two hours of sleep, you know, maybe two nights in a row. So that's one way that this can affect people a lot. And think of the thousands of people who live within, I'm probably almost a mile from that railroad crossing. There's not much to stop the sound from coming across the lake, but the thousands and thousands of people live within a mile of that railroad crossing. So, you know, it's just a matter of basically trying to eliminate unnecessary noise in the community. And, and I think that Brian's described how it really is with the road conditions that they're trying to change to make it safer and safer. It's just unnecessary noise that you have the power to eliminate. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Pettit's up, and then I'll call for those who didn't get a chance to sign up.
Good afternoon, commissioners. John Pettit, Rich Road. I know what trains sound like. In fact, I'm sure some of you may have visited, have heard trains at my place. And a brief comment in regard. At one point, I lived on Patterson Lake. In the particular circumstances gentlemen are talking about, you could not have a more ideal position to eliminate the train noise. There's only 120 residents. It's a one-way, dead-end road to where they live, and you have crossbars. Only an idiot would have to try to drive in front of a train, and you can't stop idiots. Okay, now on to my other significant topic. My other significant topic has to do with the alleged plan of consideration of a new courthouse facility. I don't know if any of you actually, as commissioners, understand that the comprehensive plan that Thurston County has is actually the virtual constitution of how county government's supposed to run. I bring that up because it's kind of like the speed limit signs. It tells you when you can go and when you can't. The process for adding any new facility requires, if it is not on the capital facility plan, it requires a comprehensive amendment. It's that simple. It's not, there is no provision currently on the current plan for a new courthouse facility. On the upcoming one, that's going to have public comment at the planning commission, there is none. There's no plan. That is the process. That is the means to get public input. We didn't hire you guys, elect you guys to be making decisions without any input from the public. You need to pay attention and follow the law. Essentially, while I have opposition, I do believe we need a new courthouse. The commissioners, over the past number of years, have absolutely neglected any maintenance on the facility. They've destroyed the old courthouse. It needs to be replaced. That's not a question. But you don't put it in a spot where you have... But you don't put it in a spot where you have liquefaction soils, which likely would be subject to being destroyed like the Schutzh Parkway was in 2001. It is not a good site. There's not enough parking. If you're going to do something, I was always, if you're going to do anything, do it right. Don't just always settle or try to make something happen. I would even consider joining the cause to try to find the right solution, because in order to make a right solution, you're going to need to create some tax revenue. The one that's being proposed, I think there's probably $50 million more for additional fixes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Pettit. Anyone who's listening?
Thank you. My name is Rhonda Larson Kramer. I live in Olympia. I would like to talk about a staff proposal that will be coming before you. This is a proposal that staff is calling minor, a minor amendment to the permitting rules. The proposal is meant to make it easier to build new housing in rural areas. It would do that by reducing transparency for developments of up to 20 units of new housing. Staff received 47 pages of comments objecting to it at a recent Planning Commission meeting. The proposal had been buried in a lengthy document that contained a slew of minor amendments to permitting regulations. It was by sheer luck that community members noticed it in time to comment. I would suggest that in the future, proposals that are so major be made a docket item. That's the only way to make them get the notice that they deserve. In either case, this particular proposal should wait until the update to the comprehensive plan is completed so that they are consistent with each other. To give you some background, currently, the county does not require environmental review if a project will build up to four new housing units outside the urban growth area. That's called a categorical exemption under the State Environmental Policy Act, or SEPA. The state law allows counties to decide how many units to exempt from environmental review under SEPA, but it sets a maximum of 20 units if you're doing the building outside the urban growth area. Staff is proposing to increase the exemption in Thurston County to the max. The justification given is that the county already adequately protects environment, the environment through its critical areas ordinances, and that there's a need to make permitting easier. However, the county's existing development codes and ordinances don't look into cumulative impacts from other proposed development in the rural area. An environmental review under SEPA is required to look at cumulative impacts. The same is true of climate impacts. It's not something that will get considered under the county's existing development codes, but the county is required to consider climate in environmental review under SEPA. Also, many of the county's existing codes need updated standards to ensure there is adequate protection of critical resources like drinking water aquifers. So the existing codes really aren't a substitute for a SEPA review. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the boardroom for this particular area of public comment? I see online Ms. Reed. I saw your hand before. Are you here to give public comment?
I am.
Okay, you're up. You've got three minutes.
Can you hear me? Perfect, thank you. So, the county commissioners and chair, I urgently demand that Thurston County Board of County Commissioners vote to authorize an independent investigation into the suspected fraud I reported between May of 2024 and, excuse me, and July of 2024 involving partners in prevention education, including but not limited to payments to staff members for fraudulent rental assistance, submission of ineligible expenditures, my supervisors, Tom Webster and Keely Marino, authorizing invoices that they knew were in, had ineligible spending and/or padded ledgers, misuse of public funds by Pipe, my wrongful termination and, or in retaliation for my whistleblower activities and complaint, and the mismanagement of public funds and conflict of interest of my supervisor, Keely Marino. I believe the county's failure to investigate my tort claim, report the fraud to the county auditor, deletion of records, and false accusations against me violate state law, county policies, and my civil rights. Given your precedent of authorizing independent investigations for lesser issues and approval, and the approval of $400,000 in advances that were never repaid, there must be an intervention. This is shameful, and I believe that you are obligated to take this claim seriously. As the contract manager to the, as the contract manager, I reported to the fiscal manager after asking my supervisors repeatedly for the policy and protocol for reporting fraud after being dismissed. OHHP management authorized two $200,000 advances to Pipe within three months, which were never repaid. My supervisor's Keely Marino, my supervisor, Keely Marino, had a clear conflict of interest as she was close friends with the bookkeeper of Pipe and the executive director, hosting weekly Dungeons and Dragons meetings at her house. Seventeen days after my whistleblower disclosures to fiscal, I was terminated for allegedly unprofessional behavior, rolling my eyes and crossing my arms during a Zoom meeting, a pretextual reason that given, that had never been written up or received any discipline or violated any policy. Post-termination, Ms. Marino, Tom Webster, and Jennifer Freihite perjured themselves by writing sworn declarations falsely accusing me of stealing personal protective information and a conflict of interest through a second job. On July 16, I filed a tort claim directing the preservation of emails and documents. The Risk Management Office failed to investigate it and respond to my complaint, obstructing my redress. Excuse me. Despite the county's claim, I was in a whistleblower that ALJ found that I was. I am demanding that you all vote to appoint an independent investigator to examine the fraud I reported, Ms. Marino's conflict of interest, my wrongful termination, the email deletion, and tort claim inaction, and fraud reporting failure, the anti-black and discriminatory practices of OHHP, and Tom Webster and Jennifer Freihite's mismanagement of public funds and violation of the county's procurement, grant management, and auditing policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that wraps up public comment. That's the end of the business meeting. We are adjourned there. We're going to move directly into a public hearing related to Long Lake Management District. I need to get. All right, we're going to take about five minutes just to get paperwork and do the transition, so hang tight.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Is this spoken, okay? Yeah, so this is the first step in the formation of the Long Lake, the new Long Lake Management District Number 25, and the petition to create this Lake Management District met the criteria in State RCW. Over 20% of the property owners in the, in the LMD boundaries signed the petition, and so this is the next step to get this process moving forward. So as you know, the original, this Lake Management District's been around for a number of years. This is at least the third iteration of it. I've mentioned in previous meetings that if we do not continue the activities of this management district, the lake will revert back to where it was before it was being properly managed under the leadership of the Lake Management District. The primary issue is a lot of phosphorus in the sediments that, unless sequestered, presents a lot of food for algae and cyanobacteria. Cyanobacteria, as you know, create toxins, and those can have human health, human health impacts through ingestion, but also they can go airborne. And there are studies that show in areas that are heavily impacted by cyanobacteria on lakes that it can actually be found in the bloodstreams of people that are living on the lake. Those are like the worst-case scenarios, but we don't want to go back, you know, to, you know, to that situation. So I have not been able to review the written comments yet, but I'm excited to do that and see, and see what we have. So do you have any other questions before we get started?
Questions? No?
Okay, thank you.
Now we'll move to public testimony. I have four folks signed up. If you haven't signed up, I'll call for open folks, but we're going to start with Mike Ochsner. Hope I got that close.
You were close. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Mike Exner of 2614 Carpenter Road, Southeast. I also serve as the chairman of the steering committee for the Long Lake LMD. Thank you for allowing our public hearing today. In 1974, my grandfather purchased the home that I now live in. In 1985, Mill Foil was discovered on Long Lake. By 1986, Long Lake was almost unswimmable, no fish, no ability to have safe and enjoyable experience on Long Lake, and the first LMD in Thurston County was formed. By 1990, Mill Foil was completely eradicated from Long Lake, using monies from state grants and voluntary taxes by the residents of the lake. In 1991, when that Lake Management District finished, the residents said, "We're not done. We want to protect our lake for the future, for our residents, for our kids, for our grandkids, and for the well-being of our community." Now, 40 years later, we have a strong steering committee of 20 volunteers that work hand in hand with our county representatives to manage the buoys, to manage the water safety, to manage water clarity, to manage algae. We've treated lily pads, water lilies, irises, algae, phosphorus. We do weekly to monthly vegetation tours. We do monitoring of lake testing and toxin levels in the water. We're the only major lake in Thurston County that's had no problems with toxic algae in the last 18 months. Recently, actually about 30 days ago, when we were doing a weed treatment, our treater discovered Mill Foil had entered Long Lake again. Because of the work of our LMD, the work plan, our resources, and our reserves, within 30 days, we were able to do an instant treatment so that Mill Foil will not ever again become an issue on our lake because we can respond and address it with our work plan, our savings, our resources, our volunteers, and the support of the commission. Thank you for your time, and look forward to moving forward in the process.
Next up is Eric Casino.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Eric Casino, and I live on Long Lake, and I just wanted to come in and ask for your continued support of the LMD. We've done a lot of great work out there. I think some of you have seen the work that we've done. We have huge support from our communities. I know anecdotally, the thing that I hear from the community most is, "We'll pay more if you'll do more," and I think that's a pretty good testament of all the good stuff that we're doing. I'm grateful that the relationship the LMD has with the county has been as good as it's been. I know that in times past, we've had a little bit of contention, and it seems like we're way past that. We have great staff, and we have great relationships with our staff, and things are going smoothly, and I would like to see that continue. The one thing that I am concerned about at this particular point is more the process of renewing this LMD. We are on a really tight timeline to get everything done, and even if we are able to get the LMD renewed, if we don't stick to this timeline, we'll miss out on a year's worth of funding because we won't be able to get our stuff over to the taxes, get the tax collections done in time. So I'm hoping that if any of you have any concerns, or you have any reservations or hesitations about supporting the LMD, that we could work on those sooner than later, make sure that everybody's on the same page so we don't miss out on any of that kind of, or we don't have any of those kind of problems. But again, I hope you are able to support the LMD. If you haven't been out yet, take a look at the work we do. I would like to see you come out, and we'll show you around, and you can see everything that we do out there. Thank you very much.
Take care. Steve? Vicki on deck?
Hi, my name's Steve Maurer. I live on Francis Drive here in, on Long Lake. We actually have owned our home since 2019, moved in full-time in 2022, and I was introduced to the Long Lake Management District Committee a while back, and I started going to those meetings, and now I'm on the committee. But what I learned from that is the things that they can do, that they're able to react quickly, as Mike and Eric have said, to what is happening on the lake. We're going to go out here later this week and do some more plant observations and pull some of the plants that are invasive, but... But these things are huge and essential because my goal is to live in this house with my wife until we can't anymore. And that means we need to maintain that lake, and this committee does a great job. Nobody's paid. We're volunteers. We take the funds that are gathered through the renewal of the district and then effectively, with the oversight of the county, use those funds to do the things that need to be done to keep this lake safe and a place where everybody can go out and have fun and enjoy it and just live on it. And I would wholeheartedly endorse the renewal of this management district and ask that you do the same. Thanks.
Thank you. Vicki?
Vicki Toovee.
Toovee, sorry.
3115 Hils Court. We've lived out in the lake for 23 years. I've been on the committee for about six, and I've been so impressed with the efforts, their dedication, their time commitment, and their just love for the lake and love for the health of the lake and the education that they've promoted to our, all our lake residents and how to maintain the health of the lake through property, through septic tanks, through even think personal like toilet paper use. They get right down into the personal stuff they can do to help the lake, and it's paid off. The lake is the best it's been in the whole time we've lived there, this summer. Everybody's kind of happy, so we'd like to maintain that because we've dodged a couple bullets, and it's been a close call. The lake wanted to die a couple times, and we, you and we stepped in and took care of that. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. Anyone else who didn't get a chance to sign up? Okay, that covers public comment. Any discussion from the board at this time? Have you entertained a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, here, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That closes the public hearing, and now we have the opportunity to make a motion to approve the resolution and move the process forward.
I move to approve the resolution of intention to establish Long Lake Management District number 25.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the resolution of intention and discussion. Stuart, could I ask you back for a second? Just to clarify, like, we did this at a work session, but since we're in the public hearing, if the board approves this motion, then what's the next thing?
The next step is to set a public hearing for the resolutions, the resolution of findings and determinations.
That would come at a board meeting, like, on the 19th of August potentially.
Yes.
And you've got it, as I recall, going to Mr. Casino's point, you've got it dialed up.
Yes, it's already, it's already.
On a timeline that's moving concurrently. Moving faster than previous processes so that we can meet the deadline.
Yeah, it is. It's definitely different, but it's all checked out that we can do it this way. Plus, it's an existing program that's been successful and well-run, so that makes a difference as well.
Makes a huge difference to me, just on that point, yeah. If it was a new Lake Management District, we may not be wanting to speed this up in this way.
Yes.
Because there'd be a lot of other considerations.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
Say thank you to the residents that came, provided testimony. It's great to hear, you know, like, positive things about programs that we're doing and the fact that you guys are so embedded in that, in that community and in the lake. It's great to hear that. Thank you.
Helps us feel good about the decision to move this process forward quickly. Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any polls? Motion passed unanimously. We're all done.